All right, welcome everybody. I'm sorry about the delay. Welcome everybody to the Kichai City Council meeting. It is now 7:08 and we're gonna go ahead and get started. It's Thursday, July 11th. Debbie, could you please call roll?
Can we just sign?
Here.
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 All right, if everyone could please stand for the pledge. And just so everybody knows, we do have our honorary mayor for a day and I'll let her introduce herself really quick.
Hi, my name is Addie and like she said, I'm the honorary mayor for a day.
Addie is gonna lead us in the pledge, so go ahead Addie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move on to approving tonight's agenda. Counsel, any questions or changes to tonight's agenda? Matt, I have one clarifying question. Do we have an executive session?
We do not.
All right, and if everyone wants to strike number 11 off of theirs as we do not have an executive session. Any other questions, counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
We approve the agenda, striking number 11, the executive session.
Do I have a second? Thank you. So I have a motion by Todd, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's 4-0. We'll move on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Counsel, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's 4-0. We'll move on to...
Are there any Kichai groups and communities that we can help with?
We are seeing none, so we can move on.
Are there any council members with Kichai good news they'd like to share?
Sure.
Go ahead, council member Baldrick.
It's been a long three weeks at no fault of the city, but sue has finally paved.
Any other council members have any Kichai good news? Well, I guess my Kichai good news is the fact that we do have our honorary mayor for a day. She was, it's gonna be in my council report, but she's been able to shadow me all day and hang out with Chief and Matt and I and I'll go into a little more detail on council reports. Any other Kichai good news? And we have a Kichai good news from our honorary mayor.
I got to ride around with Lieutenant Smith and we checked a couple houses for people who were on vacation and neither one was broken into.
We like to hear that. It sounds like our police department is doing their job, so thank you very much for all that you do. So that is some great Kichai good news. All right, we'll move on to public comment. I know we do have some people here for public comment tonight, so I want to remind everybody that public wishing to address the council are asked to sign the public forum request form in the foyer listing your topic along with your name, address, and phone number for the record. You're asked to limit your presentation to five minutes. Your comments or requests may be addressed at a future meeting. And Ms. Addie is going to keep time for us tonight, so. First one.
Doug Bonnison?
All right, Doug.
Is that my time?
We appreciate that.
Mike, can I talk up here?
We don't have him.
Okay. Hey, my name is Doug Bonnison. I live here in Kichai 521. I'm a physical therapist and I just started my 34th year practicing medicine. And just have a couple comments, thoughts, and treating the elders of the city. Because you guys are the elders of the city. You guys sit at the gates and you guys allow what comes in and what comes out, what goes out. Since, I've been practicing since 91. I've seen tens of thousands of patients. I've had tens of thousands of exercise programs for patients. I know what people do and I know what people don't do. You give them all the tools to succeed and they go over here. And so, and I'm hearing in the clinic, and what I'm seeing more, I'm seeing more mental health issues, okay? I know that's kind of a hot topic, but there's, there is, there's seriously more mental health issues going on. And the word crazy is used in a lot of sentences and that denotes not well in the head, okay? I have, I might have a thought and a recommendation to help address that for the city, so the city's actually healthier. There's a verse, actually in Psalm 23, it says, "He makes me delight down in green pastures. He leaves me beside still waters. He restores my soul. Your soul is your mind, blowing emotions." That's what you think with it. It's written, if you don't, if you don't think right, your health is not well. Literally, it's a man that takes a solis. And I think in the park, the park has, it has still waters, it has green pastures, and people go over there just to restore their soul. Because I, my clinic, I back up to the, to the park. So I see the park from 6:00 AM until 8:00 at night. I see people walking their dogs, picking up poop, not picking up poop, running, jogging, baby, stuff like that. And you can tell, people are just there just to sit and just to restore their soul. And so, I would entreat the council to, because I just heard about this exercise thing just very recently. I don't know if it's like the best place for it. I'm not against it, but I don't know if it's the best place for it. I, if, there might be a better place for it, but in the park? You got the answer. Why do people walk? They shut down and not have input and not have like, like, you know, stuff coming in that to process more. Maybe something that's calm and so, just an idea, down here where the woodpile's at. If you want something exercise-wise that is, that will attract people to Kichai, pickleball courts. You put in six pickleball courts and you throw that exercise thing that is whatever's in the works. Those are synergistic things that work together. Light things go together, okay? You do that, you'll have hundreds of people. I have, I have contact, somebody just said last week, says pickleball's not going away. It is, it is here to stay. You wanna bring people to town? Pickleball courts. Away from the park, keep the park quiet, okay? Second thing, I got minute 46. The second thing is, I know there's some talk about a liquor license. Somebody's applying for a liquor license, okay? I grew up in an alcoholic household, okay? I, up in Nebraska. And it does not promote a healthy environment. And you guys are, again, you guys are the city elders. I've been doing research on this stuff. Looked at all the government studies about the socioeconomic effects of a liquor store in, in a city. Who's Chief Ed? He probably knows all these things. He had to discover. Yeah, imagine that. Addictions, passivity, crime, domestic violence, decreased safety in neighborhoods. And you see, you just not, it's just not healthy for an environment to have. Tuesday morning, I got up and I went from this parking lot to Simon Liquor and it's 1.8 miles in Park City. That's a near slipper store. Keep that stuff there, keep Kichai safe, keep it healthy, keep it, you know, I'm going back and looking at the 2021, 22 city survey. Cafes, internet cafes, bakery, ice cream place, little restaurant. Those promote community. I think what, also what the Chief is doing is he's doing, moving in the park. A hundred people, a hundred people. That's community. That's like really cool. Because we saw it from our back, from our back door. I don't know, that is, that's really bringing people together, so anyway. I have four seconds left, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. April Owens, 602 North Prairie Creek Drive. I have two requests for the city this evening regarding a proposed fitness court. I came to the last meeting, did my comment, just sat to listen and to hear all the information that was being shared before I shared my opinion. First, I would like to ask that if the city isn't able to solicit or obtain the additional grants or donations that are necessary to put in the fitness court, that they please don't use city funds. Scrap the idea. It's not a way we want to invest our money. At least, that's my personal opinion. Second, I would like to ask that the June 13th council minutes are corrected to reflect that the equipment is not intended for use for individuals younger than 14 years of age as stated in the safety standards on the National Fitness Campaign website. The council minutes currently say that it's available for use for all ages, and that's incorrect. I would also like to ask that in the future, information that is unverified, inaccurate, or misleading isn't presented as factual on matters that are being voted on by the council, especially after the city has recently and repeatedly decried private citizens for sharing what they decided was misinformation. Additionally, I would like to refute the claim that the existing exercise equipment that's in the park now hasn't been used because of its dilapidated state. In the almost 15 years that I've lived in Kichai, I've raised five kids at that park and I've never seen that stuff used for its intended purpose. Lastly, I would like to voice my strenuous objection to the potential placement of this equipment on the green space immediately south of the shelter. Because that's kind of our only gathering space. It's been awesome to have, for the movie in the park, everybody's getting together, meeting new people in the community. I think that's awesome. And I think if that space wasn't available for things like that, I think that would be somewhat of a detractor for our, our park. So if we could keep that space available to the community for those purposes, I'd really appreciate that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Doug.
Kathy Bonnison. Hi, I'm Kathy Bonnison, 521 North Prairie Creek Drive. I also have some additional questions about the fitness court slash thoughts. So, one of my questions was, and if you can answer it, is what is the timeframe that everyone's looking at for executing the installation of this fitness court that's being discussed? Is there a specific timeframe right now?
So this is actually your time to talk, we, we just listen?
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. Well, my question is, if there is a specific timeframe, my second question is, will the park board be reestablished before the fitness court goes in? The reason I'm asking this is because making this larger the decision for something that's going to impact the park so much without an existing park board will forever impact the face of the park and our town. The park board is something that's set in place as kind of a check and balance. So, the park board is not something that is against the city. The city should not be something that's against the park board. The idea is that they are working together and that they are able to counsel together to be able to find the best answer possible. That's how governments set up, checks and balances. That's just the way it works. So, my question is also, if there is not going to be a park board set up before this decision is made, it seems counterproductive to me. If you go online and you look at the code in the city of Kichai, there is a park board code in Article 2, which goes through and talks about how the park board was established. It talks about vacancies, how they're filled, et cetera. But when you get down to ordinance number 357, Section 5, that's ordinance 357, Section 5, it says, and I quote, "The park board shall be an advisory body and shall counsel the governing body relative to park and recreational activities in the city." So this fitness court would fall underneath a park and recreational activity of the city. They would serve as an advisory board for that. I feel strongly that the code for the city is being broken if we do not have a park board in place to be able to counsel where this goes. And this ordinance 357, Section 5, is actually being broken if that gets installed and there is no park board. Now, am I vying that I myself should be on the park board? I am not. I am just saying, they are a counseling body and I have served on it before. I understand what it looks like. The desire is to counsel to be able to find the best outcome possible. And the people on the park board really care about the city, as you guys do. So, it makes me think of a scripture, Proverbs 11:14, which says, "Where no counsel is, the people fall; but in the multitude of counselors, there is safety." So please consider reinstalling the park board prior to deciding on the location of this fitness park. And I also heard there was a matching donor involved, so it really won't be a need to raise the money. Is this matching donor determining where it goes? I believe the park board needs to be in on this, I really do. Please consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stephanie Coleman. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Coleman. I live at 532 North Prairie Creek Drive. I'm a mom, stay-at-home mama of three young boys. And I just wanted to kind of give input about the Blue Cross Blue Shield fitness court. I understand that the money will come from private donors. And I'm not, I think it's great that we got the grant. I would just ask, please, don't put it in the area south of the northwest corner at the park. My boys really enjoy playing on that, those stone steps that were put in there. Or the area just south of the covered picnic pavilion, because we really love like doing the Kichai Easter egg hunt there and movies in the park. We enjoy doing those activities there. We really love to see the park green space preserved as much as possible. We really love just having a space where they can run around, do football. If we were to have anything put in for the park, we'd really love pickleball courts or basketball courts, something that the kids could use because I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about how we'll keep kids off of the fitness court and liability for the city if anyone gets injured on it. Those are some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Hart, 531 Prairie Creek Drive. And I'm here to talk about the workout station. I, it's a little unsettling not knowing where this will even be put and will the decision be made? And then will the public have an input on where the location is? And how much will it cost to have the ground prepared to have this put on there? Will it be lighting installed for the workout station since the park is open late for people to be able to use it? That's gonna be an additional cost. How much will that cost? Some people have expressed their excitement about the artistic aspects of the workout area. How much will it cost to have the design made for this? And then to have it painted? That's an additional cost that we need to consider about this. And I showed the design to my daughter, who is a first grade teacher. The first thing she said was, "That is nice. It will make a great jungle gym for kids because that's exactly what it's gonna be used for." She said that those kids will be crawling all over it. And I think that she probably is right and she deals with first grade kids all day long. And I know it was suggested that we change, that a change be made from eight park board numbers to four, and I think that that would be a big mistake. I think we need a bigger involvement input than four people. And I really haven't even seen anything put out about asking people, is there anybody out there that's interested in being on the park board? I don't think anything has even been presented to the public about that. And people are making suggestions and/or decisions for our community who do not even live in Kichai. They have no vested interest in our community. They can quit their job and move on. And the people of Kichai are then left with what they wanted and not necessarily what the people of Kichai were asking or wanting. As far as I know, there are no residents who have requested this workout station. People have expressed interest in upgrading the playground equipment and possibly for pickleball courts or basketball courts. I think it would be nice for the council to listen to what the residents are requesting. Thank you.
All right.
You have it?
John. Previous Mayor Spear, you know the, what is going on? Shame shame. All right. Is it Mayor Spear or Patty?
John and Patty. Can we do it together?
He can speak for both. I'll come on.
Okay. The Spears.
John and Patty Spear, 642 Creek Trail Circle. Only thing I've learned is that my wife always said the first word and the last.
I just would say, I mean, I think having anything that moves us forward and, and, you know, out of the box thinking is wonderful. I do think though, that some of this, this exercise placed by Blue Cross Blue Shield is, doesn't seem in the character for Kichai. And one of the things, we're past the point of even having little children, little grandchildren, where we don't have any little ones coming on anymore. But I still feel a heart for the young mothers that live in our area, that they have a place where they can bring their children, have good. We need to upgrade our playground equipment. And I love our green space in our park and I would just love to see it stay that way. So I agree with Doug. I'm not necessarily against the facility. I just do not think that that is the proper placement of it.
And I agree with everything my wife said. That's one important thing. And in terms of priorities, I, I have to say that I think that our playground equipment, it's, it is old and decrepit and it, and we had gone from what I think was a really nice park area to just average or below average. And I would like, in terms of priorities, that we get playground equipment and get a surface of, you know, something else than the rock and pebbles that are in there. Get that taken care of before moving on to a fitness area. And I think that's it.
Well, thank you very much.
I need you for the last word.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and close public comments. What do you think?
We have no old business, so we'll just move on.
We'll move on to new business, Kroger opioid settlement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The agenda item in front of you is for a new proposed national opioid settlement that has been reached by Kroger. It is a class action lawsuit. The state of Kansas is participating in the lawsuit. And Kichai being a political subdivision of the state will, what we're requesting is we approve to follow the state of Kansas on this settlement. We wouldn't receive any funds that are distributed through the state of Kansas to us, similar to the funds we got from the opioid settlement last, well, we got a few of them this year, but last year and this year. So Andrew, our city attorney, has looked this over and approved it as to form and recommends that the city participate as the state of Kansas is in the lawsuit.
So the one question I have, I guess, is, is there any drawbacks if we don't approve this?
No, you know, the way that this type of class action lawsuit works is really the only reason you wouldn't join in is if you wanted to, you go after your own independent power of action against Kroger, which I, I imagine the city doesn't have any interest in pursuing. And so, by joining into this, you're, I guess you're giving up that ability, but you're also allowing the state to take care of everything. And if there is a lot of settlement money, we'll get our shitter of that, yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
The first question is, is there any obligation on our part should we receive these opioid settlement, settlement dollars?
Yeah, sometimes it depends on, I mean, they're not there yet, but it depends on the terms of the settlement. So for example, in the previous settlements that we received in those lawsuits, there were restrictions on what they could be used for generally. The idea is that because this is to compensate the city for additional expenses it has had in fighting the opioid crisis, that then those funds need to be used something related to that. So you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think generally we use them for, you know, police and services that someone's.
Yeah, we use those. The last funds we received, we use for community policing services, specifically movie in the park, where the police department does some of that outreach for drug and alcohol awareness also.
That was the answer to my second question. How would those funds be utilized? Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I approve participation in the Kroger National Opioid Settlement and authorize the mayor to sign the subdivision participation and release form as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen. All in favor say aye. Carrie's 4-0. Move on to the presentation of the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the presentation of our budget and the information contained tonight is from the information we have gathered through workshops that we have and the priorities that the council has given us. Also comes from discussions that I've had with you as individual council members and people in the community as well. Rather than go through all the slides that we went through last time, there's only gonna be about four of them tonight. So please ask any questions as we go through these. One of the reasons that the meeting started late tonight is because we were literally crunching numbers up until about 5:50 or 6:55 tonight. So that's one of the reasons we had to start late. But I think we came up with a very good product and I think you will be happy with it. The recommendations that you gave us in the workshops and through conversation were you wanted additional personnel. You wanted to bolster the staff of the city to meet the demands, service demands of the city. That includes police officers, a front desk or front administrative clerk. And we had also talked about a public works position as well. Now, this recommendation is void of the public works position as staff. We talked about that, public works. I needed the position this year. However, it was not funded in our budget. The reason they needed that position was to help with all this gas line relocation. Well, they've got it done. They don't need the extra person right now. Could they use an extra person? Yes. Can they get by without one? Yes, they can continue to do that. So, a new position for public works will be looked at in the future. Maybe '26, '27. It really depends on the growth of the city. It is imperative that we bolster our police department and so we left the one police officer position in there. Capital improvements. We retained the replacement of the patrol vehicle. Actually, in the short time between now and our last meeting, we lost an engine in the police car, so we had to replace the engine. So that changed our replacement schedule a little bit. So, we just had to put a new engine in the police car, so we're gonna keep that police car in the fleet and still need to add another police car. So rather than a replacement, we will be adding a police car to the fleet. It still includes repairs and resurfacing to Comanche Drive Court and Circle and Quabber Court. Road repairs and maintenance to Tigua from the 1600 block to Rock Road and enhancements to our park. Now, we had initially talked about adding $50,000 to go towards parks and I'll explain that a little more in detail. But we're gonna propose roughly $67,000 go to parks. Still replacing the truck with public works and some additional equipment like the brush horn. So, with all of our changes, we came down to maintaining a flat mill at 36.667. So no increases to the mill, okay? How did we do it? This past year, we had an increase in our assessed valuation. All the homes, all the businesses in Kichai. the businesses in Kechai, the value of those went up. That generated through our, uh, property tax, an additional hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that goes into our general fund. So we have an additional hundred and twenty-eight thousand. In the past, the city has not budgeted interest income from our investments, uh, those going back in looking, those are pretty stable. We, we're at about four percent, anywhere between four percent and four point eight three percent return, uh, we feel those will stay very stable, um, so we have budgeted conservatively, uh, that we will generate approximately ninety thousand dollars next year on those investments. Public building commission lease payments, this building, uh, this is our last year for lease payments on this building, we pay seventy-three thousand dollars a year, that will be an additional seventy-three thousand dollars back in our budget. Same thing with our street grant, uh, it expires this year, that's an additional twenty-seven thousand back in our budget. And one of the things that took the most time and that we really worked hard on, Teresa put in a ton of work on this, was moving our public work salaries from the general fund back to where they should be, and in the street fund. Uh, there's a split, and I don't know the exact split, but at current time, ten percent of public work salaries are taken from the general fund. When they don't work up here, you know, their time really isn't spent here, it's in hall, it's spent working on your utilities, your streets, uh, doing all the things that, uh, public works does. So that frees up about forty-nine thousand dollars in our, our budget. We're gonna keep what we have, currently, there is, there are six mills for about the last six years, Teresa?
Since twenty sixteen?
Eight years.
Oh, eight, okay, I'm sorry. And, uh, twenty sixteen is one of those, you know, one flat, um, it's been since twenty, twenty twenty, I believe.
Approximately the last four years. The council designated six mills to go directly towards streets, to bring our streets up to where they needed to be, they were in disrepair, they needed a lot of work done, we had completed all of that, um, we only have a couple streets left, we're gonna complete those next year. Uh, we currently have reserve funds that we'll transfer over, that will cover the cost of those. So we feel that we can reduce that six mill to four mill, uh, which will still push about a hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars to streets, so we can continue to maintain them, um, and keep those where they need to be. And then that two mills, rather than going to, uh, streets, we recommend that we put that towards parks. So that's, rather than putting fifty thousand dollars to parks, we feel that, uh, we can take that two mills, that's not going to be used for streets, and put that to enhancements in the park and building those funds up. Any questions?
I guess on the, on the streets, the four mills for the streets, um, do we feel confident going forward, if that's an amount that we can, we can maintain and not get back in the same such a situation we were ten years ago, or, or, kind of better?
It is, and Thomas and I have had a lot of conversation on that, and he is confident that that four mills will support any maintenance that we need to.
So, Matt, I know that, um, this building, we go off payments this year.
This year.
What about the police department?
Yeah, next building, uh, which is our last building, um, will come up in twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, yes.
That will be the last year we make a payment on.
The last year we can make a payment on.
So it will be on the tax roll, or on the?
On the budget.
Yeah.
For twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six, but twenty twenty-seven.
And approximately what's that, this is seventy-three thou-
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
Twenty-two? Just thinking ahead.
It's twenty-four this year, it'll be, it's twenty-two this year, it'll go down over the next couple of years.
Any other questions, Council?
No questions, just, thank you, I know it wasn't easy.
You know, it, it took a team effort, it wasn't one person. We have had budget meeting after budget meeting after budget meeting, uh, myself, department heads have talked, of course, I've talked to you as council members, I've talked to citizens in the community, um, and I think we put together a very good conservative budget, and I am happy that we were able to keep that mill at the flat, that we don't have to raise it, because I think some of our other county taxes may be going up this year a little bit, so I think that's important. I will say that, uh, the resounding theme that came up as we were working on this budget at is this city needs to grow, uh, we really have to grow. Having a flat mill at the for so many years with flat growth, um, hasn't, it's not doing us any good. So we're gonna get to the point where we need to do one of two things. We need to cut services, which equates to people, or we need to increase our property taxes. But if we can stimulate growth and get growth growing in the right directions like we want it to, and manage that growth, uh, we're gonna be pretty well off. And that will allow us to keep those taxes low and continue to provide the services we need to.
Well, I know I spent probably, what, four hours with you today going over numbers and things, my brain's a little fried, but, um, I mean, you went over this really well with me both times, and so I appreciate it. Can you go back one slide, just so we can clarify? Oh, sorry, two slides.
That's okay.
The first, uh, the first actual slide.
Yes, you can.
So when we, on the next agenda item, I know you're gonna talk about it, um, so the thirty-nine point six 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 seven, that's what we're telling the state that we would not exceed, um, just in case.
Right, so our revenue, our revenue neutral rate, that is extremely hard to understand, right? It's, it's hard for the public to understand.
Very hard.
I'm just gonna put that out there. It's hard for us to understand, okay? So, in a nutshell, our revenue neutral rate is if we kept city services like they are today, we would need thirty-two mills, okay? No increases in anything. A city that is growing and not shrinking, there, it is nearly impossible for a city to maintain that revenue neutral rate. So, we are keeping ours flat where it has always been, um, we are able to generate a little more revenue just because of the assessed valuation of property values that have came up. So, our revenue neutral rate really is not indicative of what we need to operate as a city, okay? So we are requesting that we set our maximum not to exceed revenue rate for the purposes of reporting to the state at thirty-nine point six six seven, which is three mills higher than we are proposing the budget to be, okay? We are not saying that we are going to assess thirty-nine point six six seven mills. The budget that we are presenting to you comes in at thirty-six point six six seven, when it all goes through the county clerk, there are some little variances in there that are beyond our control, um, so we need to give ourselves a little bit of wiggle room, uh, to make sure, because once we set that cap, we cannot go higher than that, we can only go lower, okay? And if we do nothing, then we have to go by the revenue neutral rate, which is thirty-two point whatever mills, and we, we would be underwater, so.
At that point, we would not be able to spend one dollar more than what we spent last year.
It's even like a penny, isn't it? Like a one penny?
Okay, they go to the dollar.
Yeah.
And I report pennies on these state budget funds, so I will go to the dollar.
Okay.
But yes, technically not a penny, but.
Yeah. So, thank you for that clarification, I just wanted to make sure it was very clear what we would be voting on.
There's an extra six in his rate there, it should be not thirty-nine point six six seven, not three sixths.
Okay.
Just make sure, pass it.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you very much, is there anything else on the budget? Okay. Alright, well, thank you very much, we'll move on to the resolution twenty-four dash seven sixty-eight, intent to, intent to exceed revenue neutral rate. Are we just talking about the resolution?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, like I just explained, this simply sets the maximum not to exceed revenue neutral rate. Let me, yeah, the one in the packet, we forgot to change it on one of the forms, which was what we had presented last time, which was forty-one point six six seven, so we need to make the correction on that. That will be thirty-nine point six six seven.
Alright, Council, any questions after that change? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So you have the motion not to exceed the thirty-nine point six six seven.
Pass the resolution. Motion one and two on the agenda.
Okay, top of you.
Alright, I move we adopt resolution number twenty-four dash seven sixty-eight stating the intention to exceed the reven- revenue neutral rate and authorize the mayor to sign with the change to thirty-nine point six six seven mills as the maximum.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Tom, second by Kendra, and this is a roll call vote, so I have to call each person by name. So I'll start with Matt.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes four zero. And then I would entertain a, do I need the second motion then?
Yes, yes, second motion.
So I would entertain a motion for the second.
On the sheet. I make a motion that we authorize publication to establish a public hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kendra, second by Matt, and this is again a roll call vote, correct?
Enter.
Sure.
Okay.
Never heard of Walcott.
We'll start with Matt again, Matt.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Alright, Aries four oh. Um, and for those of you following along with the agenda, that was item D, and I'll move on to item E. Matt, do you have any comments about item E first?
No, this is just simply setting the, uh, public hearing for our-
We moved past that. E. We already did that, didn't we? Or is that the budget adoption?
Yes, we're on D now.
Okay. I, you get Matt. So we're on item D.
There you go. Mayor and Council, this is simply to set the, uh, budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, yeah, thank you, to set the hearing notice for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, and that will be on August twenty-second. Yeah, twenty twenty-four as well.
Okay. Any questions, Council? If not, I would entertain a motion, and that one can be just, okay. There's a, I have a motion by Matt, second by Todd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aries four oh. Now we're moving on to item E, planning commission appointments.
Mayor and Council, as you know, our planning commission is pretty much down to the bare minimum, and it has been somewhat of a struggle to find people to fill those positions, so we have found, let me go back just a little bit, the planning commission consists of six, seven members, okay? Five of those members need to be residents of the city, and two of those members need to live outside the city yet within our area of influence, and I believe our area of influence is a three-mile radius from the city. Uh, they can't live in Park City, they can't live in Bel Air, they have to live in the county. Their mailing address may be Park City, Bel Air, Kechai, Valley Center, but they have to reside in the county to, to fill those last two seats. So, we have, uh, two recommendations for you tonight, the mayor has the bios of those candidates, one is within the city, and the other is a position outside of the city in the area of influence.
Alright, and I do want to say that we had a few applicants for inside the city, they were all great applicants, um, we were in the process of this when we got, um, the second application, so we were already moving forward, and, um, so I just wanted to say thank you for all who did apply for it. But I will start with Krista McKay, um, I'll read her bio. I'm a lifelong Kechai re- I'm a lifelong resident of the Kechai area, I am deeply committed to the growth and development of our community. I graduated from Heights High School and earned my real estate license in nineteen ninety-nine. Throughout my career, I have worked with the same brokerage, building a solid foundation in, in the real estate industry. In my early career, I purchased twenty acres at the corner of Ninety-third and Rock Road, and, Rock Road North, and built my first home. Though I have moved a few times, I have stayed within Kechai's area of influence and currently reside in the area of Eighty-Fifth and Oliver, just outside the Kechai city limits. With twenty-five years of experience in real estate, I have encountered and managed a diverse range of product, projects. My expertise spans residential, commercial, and land sales, I have overseen numerous subdivision gaining extensive knowledge in the building process, including reading plots, blueprints, and ensuring compliance with setbacks, easements, and, uh, egresses for featured development. My husband and I cherish the Kechai area where he and his family have lived since nineteen seventy-two. Both he and his sister have made Kechai their home throughout their adult lives. I am fortunate to have married into the McKay family, and known for their third-generation developers and builders. John McKay, his father-in-law, has served on the Sedge County Planning Commission for over twenty years, providing me with invaluable insight into the development planning. Throughout my ex- throughout my extensive ex- experience, I have established strong relationships with key organizations such as the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, M A B C D, with the Wichita Area Builders Association, W A B A, and Sedge County Commissioners. These connections enable me to access accurate information and support when need. I am dedicated to progressing the building a better community. My reputation is honesty, longevity, and knowledge. I have gained throughout my career defines who I am today. My passion for real estate and community development, combined with my extensive expertise and strong relationship within the area, make me a strong candidate for planning commission role. I'm committed to contributing to the growth and prosperity of Kechai. Respectfully, Krista McKay. So that's the first one, I want to take a drink, because that was a lot. Our second applicant is Eric Breckenridge. Uh, Eric is an enthusiastic candidate for the Kechai Kansas Planning Commission. With a passion for community, Eric is eager to contribute to the growth and prosperity of Kechai. He brings a strong commitment to addressing the needs and aspiration of local residents. Eric's dedication to fostering a well-planned, vibrant community makes him an ideal, ideal candidate for planning commission. Eric's professional expertise include over two decades of experience in the financial service industry, where he's currently the Director of Digital Strategies and Experience at, uh, Mayor Trust Credit Union. Most recently, he has served as the Project Lead for the Credit Union's Digital Banking Conversations, where he demonstrated a keen ability to analyze, design, and implement plans to enhance digital banking services. His collaboration approach and excellent communication skills enabled him to engage effectively with stakeholders, ensuring that diverse pers- perspectives are considered in the planning process. Eric has been a resident of Kechai for nearly five years, in his free time, Eric enjoys spending quality time with his husband, Chris, and their golden doodles Tucker and Hudson, and I would love to meet his golden doodles, just so. Council, I would recommend that we appoint Eric and Krista McKay to serve on the planning commission, um, and, in the unexpired terms, and submit the appointments where the councils can set. Any questions, Council?
Will this fill out the planning commission?
No, we have one more, one seat left from outside the city, inside the area of influence.
Any other questions, Council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I hereby move to consent the appointment of Eric Breckenridge and Krista McKay to the planning commission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Aries four oh. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to sanitary sewer rehab bid acceptance.
Mayor and Council, in front of you is the agenda item for the sewer rehab bid. City has been working to upgrade our sewer system, part of that is relining the older part of our sewer system, which will essentially make it new. They take a, according to Thomas, they take a- They take a, according to Thomas, they take a sleeve, they insert it into the old tiles, I guess they are, Thomas, and then they use a procedure where they expand that, and it creates a new sewer pipe in there, which will last many, many years. Our engineer's estimate for the project was roughly eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We had a bid levy last week, and low bid came in at seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand and some change, and that is what we are recommending to council tonight to approve that bid. We have been so busy with budget that we will come back to you with funding for that and what we feel is best. We do have, and we have had for some time, ARPA funds that have been earmarked for that rehabilitation project, and those are in the amount of three hundred and five thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars. We would like to pay cash, but we need to make sure we have enough reserve funds to support that. If not, it would be something that we would probably, a project we would bond, we would like to look into it more and bring that back to you with our recommendation.
So, this is more of a receiving file?
Yes, they, they need you to receive and file this tonight, yeah.
Council, any questions? I would entertain a motion, I guess, to receive and file, right?
Uh, yeah, do the motions on, do you think they accept the bid?
Yeah, accept, accept the low bid from Mayor Specialties LLC in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven and two cents and authorize the mayor to sign.
I make a motion we accept the low bid from Mayor Specialty Services LLC in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and two cents and authorize the mayor to sign.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Kendra, second by Matt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie Swora, move on to council reports. So, during the council reports, I know, did you have a council report or you didn't? You checked it, yes. So, during council report, I would like to present Addie with her honorary mayor for a day certificate. So, I will come down, we'll come down so you guys can get pictures. Mom wants pictures.
So, you're just gonna be the only one who gets a.
Awesome, thank you. Well, as always, I have a council report, because that's who I am. Mine will be focused on Ms. Addie today, though. I'll go over some of the things I did, and then we'll let her talk about what she got to do and some of her experiences. So, Ms. Addie showed up this morning with her mom and was greeted by Matt Gensby. Well, we had a short meeting, just the three of us, before we had breakfast and got to know her a little bit better. Then Addie took a tour of City Hall, then went with Matt Gensby and I to REEP or the Regional Economic Area Partnership, I always have to think about it, where she got to see what I do at, um, community meetings. And then we came back, and she got to hang out with the police department and see Rocky, and she'll talk more about all of her fun adventures for the afternoon. So, Addie, it's your turn to shout.
I'll just say, my favorite part of the, he's gotta be, has gotta be playing with Rocky, because that was really awesome. He is super well behaved and just amazing. My favorite part was when she put on a arm sleeve and Rocky sat by me, and then when I gave him the command, he, um, ran and I attacked him. It was really funny. It was also like, just all of his immediate, like, obediencees to his commands are awesome. And I also really liked the REEP meeting, just the organization of it.
She learned a lot and asked so many good questions while we were there. It was so insightful. She was asking almost more insightful questions than some of the actual attendees, so I had an amazing time, and thank you so much for being our first honorary mayor for a day. So, if everyone could please give her another hand, that would be great. All right, we will move on, unless council has any other reports. Seeing them?
I just have one question for Addie. So, do you have political aspirations?
What do you mean by that?
Like, would you really wanna be mayor someday?
I think it is a possibility.
It's a possibility.
Then I did my job.
All right, well, staff reports are the second part of the month, so we do not have any staff reports, so I am looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I, I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Just so that the mayor, the council, staff, and public know that I am not going to be at the July twenty-fifth or August eighth meeting for medical reasons. I'm having some surgery on July twenty-third, but should be back by the August twenty-second meeting.
Awesome. I guess I should disclose why I was not at the last meeting, so for the council workshop, I did get married on June thirtieth, and so I was on my honeymoon for the next week. So, it was a workshop after, planned after, I had already planned the first wedding, so that's why I was not there.
Congratulations, man.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, any other discussion topics or anything you need to bring up tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion that we adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion by Karen, second by Kendra, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie Swora, go ahead, Addie. We adjourn.